Good evening. Welcome to the one-issue special town meeting. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. A quorum being present, I'll ask the meeting to come to water. And first, we will stand and pledge to recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with visible liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I've been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served. I would entertain a motion to dispense with a formal reading of the warrant. I have a motion. So move, second, have a second. All those in favor of waiving the reading of the warrant, please say aye. Those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote to waive the reading. Our bylaws require that we have a deputy moderator. Peter Topham, tonight, as he has for many years, has agreed to serve as the deputy moderator. I have nominated Peter, and I would ask the meeting to gratify that appointment. All those in favor, please say aye. Any oppositions, say no. That's unanimous vote. Peter, you're, once again, the assistant moderator. I'm informed by the town clerk that the tellers and the assistant moderator were sworn in prior to the meeting. At this point, I'm going to ask the chair of the advisory committee to introduce her committee, Elise Rousseau.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elise Rousseau, this year's chair of the advisory committee. This is Dan McGuigan, who is the vice chair of the advisory committee. Jerry Kelly, a former chair. Missy Seidel, Patrice Metro, Mark DeCosimo, and Linda Ferguson. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd ask Andrew Goodrich, chair of the select board, to introduce his committee and those at his table.
Hello, I'm Chair Andrew Goodrich. We have Vice Chair Susan Harrison, there you are. We have our clerk, Mr. Gilmore, James Gilmore, and then we have Karen Conley and Karen Canfield, members.
My name is Jim Toomey. I'm the town moderator. My job is to make rulings and maintain the order of the meeting. The way this works is we're going to deal with two articles here tonight, and we act only on articles that are in the warrant and only on motions that are made in accordance with the warrant. We follow the process of taking a vote, having discussion. In the course of the discussion, you're free to ask questions of the town administration, the various boards, and get what information you require in order to make a decision. The discussion should pertain to the specific subject matter of the article that's in the warrant. I ask people to refrain from discussing personalities or any kind of personal attacks. Stick to the business before us. In the course of making votes, I will call a vote by voice, but under our bylaw, I also have the ability to declare a two-thirds vote. Article one tonight requires a two-thirds vote. If I make that call, seven people may immediately rise and question that vote. So be aware of that if there is any question on the vote. Basically, understand that you are the legislators for our town. We have an executive branch, which consists of, in this case tonight, the Board of Selectmen. And we also have the advisory committee, and the advisory committee is friend of the voters here. The advisory committee, throughout the year, studies each issue that's to come before the town meetings. And in particular, tonight, they've put a great deal of effort into studying all sides of the issue here relative to the water treatment funding. You should listen to their recommendations. They spend a great deal of time and get into this in much more detail than the average voter can. So I ask that you appreciate the work that they do here. All right, with that, I think we'll move to the article. I'd ask everybody to silence their cell phones. If you have difficulty hearing, this room can be tough in terms of acoustics, the best we can do for you is to ask you to move. So, at this point, we have Article one of the meeting, and I request a motion from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. It's a long motion, so bear with me. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $20,320,961 to demolish the existing water treatment plant facility and design, construct, and equip a new water treatment plant facility and supervisory control and data acquisition system, including the payment of costs incidental related heretofore to fund such appropriation. Transfer $155,796.60 from investment income earned on the Commonwealth MA ARPA funds. Transfer $188,955.04 from investment income earned on the Plymouth County ARPA funds. Transfer $60,462.61 from Special Town Meeting vote 11/2013 Article 12 Library renovation. Transfer $339,346.96 from Special Town Meeting 05/2019 Article 1 Senior Center Veterans Memorial Gym. Transfer $22,158.97 from Special Town Meeting 11/2015 Article 1 Public Safety Complex. Transfer $750,000 from Water Enterprise retained earnings. Transfer $262,000 from Water Enterprise Capital Stabilization Fund. Transfer $484,000 from Free Cash. Transfer $550,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund. Transfer $92,480 from Toll Brothers Water and Sewer Funds. Transfer $680,000 from Wind Turbine Revolving Fund. Transfer $852,000 from the Solar Array Revolving Fund. Transfer $1,000, excuse me, transfer $1,558,144.36 from Stabilization Fund. Transfer $116.20 to Special Town Meeting 10/23 Article 1 Unpaid Bills. Transfer $34,350 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2023 Article 3 AA Replace Granular Activation Carbon. Transfer $401,998.19 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3 PP Well 10 and 11 Upgrades. Transfer $114,344.13 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3 00 Well 19 and 22 Upgrades. Transfer $19,954.40 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2020 Article 3 GG Chemical Feed Stations. Transfer $41,763.27 from Special Town Meeting 11/2018 Article 5 Emergency Water Treatment Repairs. Transfer $17,110 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2023 Article 3 Y Replace 2006 Chevy Colorado. Transfer $63,496.65 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2020 Article 3 EE Permanent Residuals Disposal Well 18B. Transfer $38,842.90 for Manual Town Meeting 04/2016 Article 4 0 Well 19 Environmental Review. Transfer $5,000 from Special Town Meeting 11/22 Article 16 South Shore Community Action. Transfer $166.18 from Special Town Meeting 11/22, excuse me, 11/2020 Article 5 Athletic Fields. Transfer $3,857.52 from Special Town Meeting 10/23 Article 1 Unpaid Bills. Transfer $500 from the Special Town Meeting 10/2023 Article 7 Grant Match Old Gates Study. Transfer $61.44 from Special Town Meeting 04/2024 Article 1 Unpaid Bills. Transfer $6,472.14 from Manual Town Meeting 10/2014 Article 5A Integrated Financial Systems. Transfer $14,300.34 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2021 Article 3M Phone Systems Expansion. Transfer $12,977.32 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3 AA Network Switches. Transfer $931.76 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2018 Article 3N Communication Equipment Stations 1 and 4. Transfer $304,671.05 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2021 Article 3N The Digitalization of Department Records. Transfer $10,000 from Special Town Meeting 10/2016 Article 4 Cushing and High School Field Well. Transfer $40,000 from the Annual Town Meeting 04/2017 Article 3J Ceiling Tile Replacement of Hatherly and Cushing. Transfer $30,044 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2020 Art 3W Wireless Smoke Detectors Cushing and Hatherly. Transfer $50,000 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2020 Article 3X Cushing Accessibility Improvements. Transfer $43,729 from Special Town Meeting 10/2023 Article 9 Pay Down of High School Roof Debt. Transfer 3 cents from Manual Town Meeting 04/2023 Article 3R High School Locker Room Phase 2. Transfer $29,051.97 from Special Town Meeting 11/2019 Article 33 Security Upgrades Town Building. Transfer $770.53 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3 CC Replace HVAC at 68 Captain Pierce Road. Transfer $274.40 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3 HH Facility Director Vehicle. Transfer $100,000 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3A Beach Improvements. Transfer $23,214.42 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3M Harbor Resiliency Study. Transfer $6,244.59 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3O Replace Truck 1 through 9. Transfer $7,978.95 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3W Replace Truck 101. Transfer $439.70 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3F Replace Truck 103. Transfer $7,753.51 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2022 3G Replace Truck 1 through 4. Transfer $4,085 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2023 Article 3H New Sidewalk Tractor. Transfer $5,648.59 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3BB Replace Truck 2 through 0. Transfer $6,950.80 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3DD Replace Truck 232. Transfer $14,421.78 from Annual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3T Replace the 2001 Trash Truck. Transfer $9,656.70 Annual Town Meeting 04/2022 Article 3D The John Deere Type Mower. Transfer $14,439 from Manual Town Meeting 04/2024 Article 3L New Holder C70 Sidewalk Machine. Transfer $20,000 from the Special Town Meeting 10/2023 Article 7 Grant Match Community Health Study to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow up to $12,800,000 under Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 8, Subsection 4, or any other enabling authority, and further that such borrowing should be submitted to the Department of Revenue for the inclusion of the debt exclusion as voted in question one at the May 21, 2022 town election. And further that the select board are authorized to apply for the American Rescue Plan Act funds through Plymouth County. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts grants gifts or donations for the purposes of this vote for federal, state, or private sources. Thank you. And the said, excuse me, and the said, select board are hereby authorized to accept such American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds through the Plymouth County and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town, and the amount of the authorized borrowing shall be reduced by the amount of the American Rescue Plan Act funds through Plymouth County and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, grants, gifts, and donations received prior to any such borrowing.
How about that? He didn't miss a single line. Do we have a second for the motion? Motion is seconded. I'm going to ask now for the recommendation, just the recommendation of the advisory committee, not commentary.
Thank you all for coming. The advisory committee met with the DPW Water Department, Finance Department, and members of the select board when discussing this article. We had very long, robust discussions about it, took it very seriously. As a result, it was really the feeling that all parties acted as best they could. It wasn't a matter of poor planning, inappropriate estimates, it was more a matter of the function of the environment, the economical environment that we're in right now. And as a result, the advisory committee feels that we should vote unanimously in favor of this article, eight to zero.
Thank you. And we, I would ask for the recommendation of Mr. Koshyer on behalf of the Capital Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you all for coming. Capital Planning Committee did meet regarding this. We reviewed the amounts and the funding mechanisms, and we voted unanimously with one abstention to recommend this article.
Thank you. I'll now turn to the Board of Selectmen and ask that you, this would be the time for you to make your presentation in support of the motion. Mr. Goodrich.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who's able to make it out tonight. There's a few questions and things I'd love to answer. But really, what is our goal here tonight? I can tell you what my goal is. It's to fix this. This is from my house today. And for the past five years, I've given up countless baseball games, gone to meetings to make sure that we can fix this problem. And over the years, I've met many people who didn't think that we could do it, and it's going to take years and years. And all of us here on the board said, well, let's get started now. This water treatment plant is part of a greater whole. Part, it is the heart of a system that includes pipe replacement, new water tanks, other filters, and upgrades to wells that we have to include capacity. This has to stop. And delaying any longer is only going to cost us more money down the road. And a lot of folks here, I know, want to know a few things. Why is it that we're over budget? There's a few reasons. One is obvious that we've seen, and it's hurt all of us, and that's inflation at a 40-year high. Parts and labor costs have gone up significantly. One small example, a simple fire hydrant costs three times as much as it did today than when I joined the board. The second major reason is what's called PFAS, or commonly known as forever chemicals. And I want to be clear here, this is a supply and demand problem. New regulations for PFAS, or these forever chemicals, went into effect in April, yes, this April. There was already a limited supply of different companies that are pre-qualified to do the bidding. But the demand has risen considerably due to these different regulations, driving up the cost. I have read and seen, either in meetings that we've had or things that we've seen, accusations that somehow this board has hid something, or the town has hid something from the residents. The bid openings for this project were in May 8. The school, though, was 10 days later. I want to be clear, the bid process is open to the public. It's been open to the public. Our state, our town employees followed the letter of the law. No one was denied any access to any meeting. No one was denied any information. And they did what they were supposed to do. Some have criticized us for not posting to social media. You can criticize, and I understand. I want you to know, the truth is, sometimes you're trying to solve the problem at hand. And that's the honest answer. Trying to solve the crisis when you see a problem. So how are we going to pay for this? As you heard earlier, we have gone through, especially our finance, Nancy Holt here, has gone through to look for every single corner in all the different budgets, down to the penny. Two goals were in mind with our board. Number one, we don't want to affect our bond rating, so we'll still have a sizable number in our stabilization, or rainy day fund. Number two is the impact. What does it mean out of your dollar, out of your pocketbook? How many dollars? This board's goal was to get down to zero. As of today, I'm very comfortable to tell you that we're at least at the $30 mark, given what we've seen, information from the state for some extra money for PFAS coming in in the fall. Mass DEP has the option, and we are pursuing every avenue to get a 0% loan for this project. If even a portion, if we get enough of a portion of this 0% loan, the impact could be zero. If the entire project is at 0%, in fact, the impact will be less than what we told you originally. At the end of the day, we have to realize what happens if we vote no, and if nothing gets done. Well, we'll do what possibly we've done for a long, long time, and that's butt off the problem and punt it aside, push it down the line, and that's going to cost us more and more. The other issue is, is that the state has already told us that the next time we send out one of those white letters telling you that we have a contamination problem, there will be a decree from the state and force us to do this project, costing us tens of millions of dollars more. Clean, clear water is not a fantasy. It is the year 2024. We can get there. It's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take time. This is the heart of the system, and I'm asking you, please, we need your help, need you to vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, now is the time for further discussion. If there's any discussion, please come to the microphones. I'll try and keep you all in order. Lady at the center, Mike.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Lambert. I live at 14 Alexander Place. I am here as a private citizen, not as part of the planning board. Mr. Goodrich, I think you're a little disingenuous when you say that all the information is open and available. I go to all the board meetings. I am a professional librarian. It took me two days to find the meeting where I could find the bid, which is May 22 of this past year. So you need to be a little more transparent with that. And in doing so, I'm going to say that I think that you squandered a lot of goodwill from your constituents by not having this a little more open and a little more flexible. We need this project, I am going to vote for this, there is no doubt about that, but we all know that the real question is, why did we not know this when we went to the polls? And we're not going to get an answer for that, which we know, but we cannot let this happen again. We have been here for a really long time, and we keep voting for people who do not want to maintain stuff. This board does want to do that. Thank God for that, that we have gotten rid of those people. But we have got to be a little more proactive and a little more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
My name's Joe Anis, 60, Collier Road. First of all, Mr. Anis, why is it, Mr. Anis, you'll be recognized when I recognize you, okay? Gentlemen on my left.
Bruce Arbenes, 23, Gannapaster Lane. I'm also the chair of the Water Resources Commission. My wife and I moved to Situate in 2018 from New Jersey. Soon thereafter, we heard from our neighbors that the elementary schools were in tough shape. Doors couldn't lock, musty. In fact, some of the discussion was about perhaps leaving town because of this. In late 2019, I joined the Water Resources Commission and quickly found out how really tough our water treatment plant was. I think we all know, it's probably at least 20 years past its useful life. Last year, in the 55 and older softball league in town, one of my teammates was a long-term resident in Situate, and he told me at some point in the past, select board members were elected because they promised not to raise taxes. And of course, that's code for not pushing any significant maintenance or And of course, that's code for not pushing any significant maintenance or significant projects. So again, we've only been here six years, many of you have been here longer. I think you understand that. It's important to deal with capital improvements when they're needed and not under dire situations like we currently find ourselves. We could have been paying for some of this in $2,010 instead of $2,024. But it's also important to be smart about your capital improvements. Use current information, look to the future, make sure what you put in place is resilient and flexible to meet the needs of the future. I'm going to give you an example of a really bad capital development project. Goes back to our town in Hillsborough, New Jersey. Before we got there, the town voted not to build a brand-new high school from the ground up in a much larger area, but they decided to expand their high school. They found even before the first expansion was done, that they needed a second one. So they immediately had to go back to the public, ask for more money, and build a second expansion. Of course, I think we all know the answer. That two expansions to the high school cost more than if they had built one from scratch. But it's worse than that. To get from the second floor, the old part of the high school, to the second floor, the second expansion, took seven minutes. And they only allocate three minutes between classes. And some of the varsity, because they expanded their footprint, some of the varsity teams had to travel to middle school to play their games. A real mess. Our new water treatment plant has got a smart design. It's well-designed. It's got parallel processes, allows us to deal with maintenance as it comes up. Or if there's something new, and we all expect new things will have to be dealt with at the new water treatment plant, it gives us the flexibility to deal with that on an as-needed basis. It also allows the town, and the water departments looked at this, to pump well water into the treatment plant to deal with the PFAS issue you heard about just before. Delaying this project really puts us at risk. Going out to the marketplace again and extending the time period in which we're going to get final quotes and the job started is just going to risk substantially more money. So I guess I'll wrap up here and say, we don't want Situate to be the Hillsborough High School of Massachusetts. I encourage everybody to vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anis? You're the next at the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, 60 Collier Road. I ask everybody to support this project, but I would ask that the board or the powers that be relook at the bids. We had two bids on this project. And we had nine or 10 or 11 pre-qualified bidders. And I wonder why the other bidders didn't bid it, but more competition creates better numbers. And we had two bidders. One bidder, the high bidder, doesn't normally bid this kind of work. I know that because I've been in this business for 60 years, 50-plus. So the low bidder, very qualified bidder, knew that, and maybe he didn't sharpen his pencil. So more bidders create better competition and potentially a better number for the town. We're asking the town to support a $14 million override, but reality is, it's 20 million. Because we're taking another 6 million from our safety fund, or whatever you want to call it, and we're going to use it for this treatment plant. So I ask that the board or the powers that be reject the bids, reach out to the pre-qualified bidders, and rebid it again, and create more competition for a better price for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll let Mr. Boudreau respond to that question while it's still fresh in terms of the rebid option.
We had looked at going back out to bid. We had eight bidders pre-qualified. We had seven takeout bids. As Mr. Anis said, we only had two return them. The issue we seem to run into is if we go back out to bid, we may not get any bidders, because the bidders that we have are bidding on other projects. We did talk to one of the bidders who did not bid, and he just has another bid that he wants to put in someplace else, that he wants that bid instead. So the main concerns were two. There's so much work out there that we might not get any bids if we went out to bid. And two, if we go back out to bid, the cost is going to be higher, and we would be potentially under BABA, which is Buy American, Build American. We estimate that'll drive the cost up by at least 20% over what we have now. So we looked at that option. We just didn't think that was a good option at this time, because we believe it'll cost us even more if we go back out to bid.
Thank you. Gentleman at the center, mic.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Paul Barkwitz, 18 Damon Lane. I'm a lawyer, and I've been representing municipalities on water issues, including water treatment plants, for almost 50 years. I'm extremely impressed with our leadership team here in Situate. The select board, the administrator, the accountant, the department heads, the legal counsel. And then the additional assistance we have from the volunteer groups, the advisory committee, the capital building committee, the water resources committee. You know, we don't all have the time or the expertise to fully understand these kind of projects or the financing options. But we have a team that does, and they put in the time. And I've got great confidence that their recommendation is the right way to go. It'll be best for town and for generations to come. Also, I've appreciated all the information that's been available. I was at the prior town meeting where the project was approved. I've followed through Situate Community Television, the select board meetings when this has been discussed. I watched the interview of Andrew Goodrich a couple of weeks ago, where he answered all the tough questions. I've been impressed by the written information. So again, I stand in support of this recommendation, and I hope everyone else supports it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left.
Scott Greenbaum, 40, Damon Road. I have a technical question. I just heard there are two processing lines in this plant. I'd like to know what the capacity of each of those lines are to make sure that we are only buying as much as we need.
Have a response to the question.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. My name is Rob Little. I'm with Woodard and Kern, the design engineer on the project. So if I understood your question properly, it's with the design capacity, the capacity of the plant. So the instantaneous design capacity is 4.5 MGD. That's enough to accept all of the water from the various wells that we're able to bring into the treatment facility and can treat your maximum required demand with one train out of service. Unlike the current plant, which has one train, there's one filter, there's one sedimentation basin, there's one of everything. If any one of those goes down, that entire surface water treatment plant is out of business, and you're reliant only on your wells, which are not able to supply the entire demand of the town. Particularly during the summer months, 4th of July weekend, my understanding is one of the highest demand periods. The new plant will be able to satisfy the maximum required demand of the town, even with one train taken out of service for routine maintenance, or if there's an issue with that train.
Thank you. I do have a comment here. I am a professional engineer. I have designed many process and building systems. Doesn't seem like you follow good engineering practices. Usually, when you have two lines, each one is sized to 67%, approximately, plus or minus, of the capacity that you need in any one line, so you do have redundancy. Or you build three lines at 50%. If we had done that, we would have built about 1 million gallons per day of capacity less, which would have saved the town a lot of money. And I'm really disappointed that an engineering firm would not understand the basic premises of engineering. I've surveyed over 30 or 40 of these plants all over the East Coast. Most of them are so grossly oversized, they can't run in the wintertime because they can't turn down speed enough. They can't slow it down that far. I'll give you an example. Fresh Pond in Cambridge is four times larger than what their load is. Harrisburg, Pennsylvania is almost four times larger. Even down in, what is it, Kingston, they're two and a half to three times larger than their demand. I know you need to put some demand in there, because we are anticipating some growth. But I think we can come up with a package that is significantly less expensive by redesigning the lines and putting them in, using good engineering practice. And so therefore, I would recommend that we go out, redo this design. It shouldn't take much time, since you have 90% of the stuff done. All the specs are written, all the equipment has been specified. It just needs to be resized for a more practical-sized plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Give you a chance to respond to that. You're going to have, sir, if you have a point of information, please come to the mic, so we all hear you. All right. There are headsets for those who are having difficulty hearing. Just let me get this straightened out. If you're in a position where you're affected by that, there's plenty of options to move closer to the, and away from that noise. So we'll do our best, but there are headsets available for those who would help. Sir, I think you were going to, give you a chance to respond to that comment.
Thank you. Perhaps I misspoke. So the withdrawal capacity that you're permitted for of Old Oak and Bucket Pond is 3 MGD, 3 million gallons per day. The treatment plant is designed with three trains. Each one of those is 50% of that approved withdrawal capacity. So we follow the N minus one. We need to be able to treat the maximum required flow with one train out of service, and that's exactly what we've done here.
Thank you. Gentleman on my right.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. I was just wondering if someone could take an opportunity just to revisit the history of the project, you know, that we have? Because as I remember, we had a town meeting in April 2002, where we discussed the project. Then I believe there was another town meeting in the fall, potentially of that same year, 2002. Then there was a town election, I believe, in May 2002, where we voted on the funds for the project. And I just wondered if someone could take a chance to walk us through the history of the project, to more or less how we arrived at the spot that we are right now? And also, would someone be able to elaborate on, if we approve this money today, will that be another town election vote? Will we have to go and vote again, since we originally voted for something in the neighborhood of 50 million? And now we're actually going to be voting for 63 or 70 million, depending on how we account for it? Thanks.
Thank you, sir. We didn't get your, the clerk didn't get your name at the beginning.
Sure, Thomas Carr, 13 Woodlebury Lane.
Thank you. Mr. Boudreau will respond to those questions.
The town any vote was in April of 2022, when we approved the project, approved the $50 million in borrowing. It was followed in May 2022 by the town election, which approved overriding Prop 2.5 and the taxes. In the April vote, there was an amendment to the article, which required the town to come back at a subsequent town meeting for approval of the site. And that took place in September of 2022, about five, five and a half months later. So that's the timeline. Once that happened, we started the design work to get us where we are today. It does not require an additional election to approve that spending. We had the same issue with the Public Safety Complex. We have to go to DOR and get approval from the Department of Revenue to add that, but it does not require a subsequent vote.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr., the gentleman at center, mic.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dan Fenley, 65 Forest Lane. In my mind, there's only two facts that are relevant to this article tonight. The first is that we have a crumbling and outdated infrastructure that needs to be replaced. The second is, the cost of everything has been going up and will continue to go up for years. And if we don't pass this article tonight, it will cost the town more money in the future. Thank you.
Gentleman on my left.
Bernie Westerveld, 12 Harborview Road. For a project of this magnitude, I assume that the representative of both bidding companies is present to give us maybe a two-minute overview, why they charge 50% more than our engineers initially calculated.
I don't believe that the bidders are here, and I don't think they'd have much standing to be here, frankly.
The bidders are not here on a $70 million project?
That's correct. The bidders are not here.
I took a little time when I sat down here, and I Googled the rating of the lowest bidder. It's not good. 3.4 out of 5. Are you sure that those people can make us happy?
I assume that's a rhetorical question. Any further comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Lady on my right.
Hello, my name is Catherine Bowman, 72 Old Forge Road. I know we have to have a water treatment plant, that's fine.
Could you move a little closer to the microphone, please?
I understand we need a new water treatment plant. But have you looked at keeping the, just the water treatment plant at the new site, and leaving the trucks and the offices and everything at the old site, and redoing the old site?
Can anyone respond to that question? Mr. Boudreau?
Yeah, we looked at that as a value engineering. Based on the current prices, we think that would save in the neighborhood of $3 million. But as you said, we would then have to go back to the current site and make repairs there. And then we get back to the issue of having to go back out to bid in a lack of bidders. So redesigning that, paying for additional redesign costs, spending the money down at Old Oak and Bucket, and then going back out to bid, we didn't think that we would save any money. It would actually cost more money to have to do that at this point.
Thank you. One more question. Are you saying that this new water treatment plant is going to take care of brown water?
That is the plan, yes. Right now, years ago, well 17A, which has high iron and manganese contact, was pumped down into the Old Oak and Bucket reservoir. Water treatment plants generally don't treat for iron and manganese. So last summer, when it got hot, the iron and manganese precipitated back out of suspension and was going through the water treatment plant, which didn't treat for it, which is why we had a lot of brown water problems last year. The new water treatment plant will treat for the iron and manganese. We are planning on putting two of our wells through there. Well 17 can still be pumped down to the reservoir, so we can treat that also. So this will do a lot to take that source of the brown water out of the system, yes.
And what about the pipes that bring them to our houses that have...
The pipes will be ongoing. We flush continuously as long as we have enough water in the spring and fall. We do a full town flushing. We did one this past spring. We'll do one in the fall when we have sufficient water. So we'll keep up with that. If you have a water main break, if you have a fire or something that causes changes in the system, you will still see brown water, that's just, you can't stop that. But the goal is, when you turn your faucet on on a Tuesday, you don't get brown water.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left.
Patrick Kearney, 8 Morton Road.
Patrick Kearney, eight Morton Road. I'd like to move the question.
Have a motion to move the question. Effect of this motion is to close debate and to move to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. It's not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye. Those opposed, no. I declare it a two-thirds vote. If seven people stand, we'll do a count. Okay, it's a two-thirds vote. We move now to a vote on the motion of the Board of Selectmen as presented by Mr. Goodrich. I'm going to ask all those in favor to say aye. Those opposed, no. I'm going to declare it a two-thirds vote. If seven people stand, we'll count. I see three people stand. Five, six, seven. Okay, we're going to do a count. Is there a question?
I can't hear you.
All right. We're going to do, we're going to do a count with tellers of the vote to make sure that it is a two-thirds vote. If someone has a question of information, please come to the microphone. I don't, I don't want there to be any confusion here.
Ken Karason, one-twelve Hadley. We're asking, who stands? The noes or the yeas?
It doesn't matter. Any seven people can ask that the vote be counted. Seven people have stood. We'll do, we'll do a tally, we'll do a hand count, make sure that we've got it right. We want to do the right thing here. Okay, the tellers will come forward. I'm going to ask those who are in favor to please stand until your vote is counted by the teller in your respective session. Where do you want us to? The tellers completed the count. All right, you can sit down at this point. And we'll ask the tellers. We'll start with the left bleachers. Actually, it's the right bleachers. My left, your right. Chris Marachi.
Seventeen, one-seven.
Right flunch, front bleacher, Penny Pipes. Penny? How many yeas were there?
Nine.
Nine. Right rear floor, Kathy McGowan.
Twenty-five, two-five.
Right center floor, Carolyn Sones.
Twenty-two.
Right front floor, including the school committee and advisory, Ms. Short.
Twenty, two-zero.
Left rear bleachers, which is my right. Ambreen.
Forty.
Four-oh. Left front bleachers, Mr. Toppin.
Seven.
Seven. Left rear floor, Linda Plowman.
Thirty, three-oh.
Three-zero. Left center floor, Andrea Gillis.
Twenty-five, two-five.
Two-five. And left front floor, Mr. Harding. Two-zero. Okay, now we would ask all those who are opposed to please stand. Tellers done counting? Okay, we'll start with right rear bleachers, Mr. Marachi. Four. Right front bleachers, Ms. Pipes. Five. Right rear floor, Ms. McGowan.
Six.
Right center floor, Ms. Sones.
Four.
Right front floor. Out, Ms. Short.
Three.
And we go to the left rear bleacher, Ambreen.
Zero.
Zero. Left front bleachers, Mr. Toppin.
Three.
Left rear floor, Linda Plowman.
Two.
Two. Left center floor, Andrea Gillis.
Two.
Two. And Mr. Harding. Zero. Okay, we're doing the tally. Our numbers wizard hazard. It is eighty-eight-point-one percent in favor and nineteen opposed. We have a two-thirds vote. The motion has passed. We'll now move to Article Two, which is a resolution which speaks to sources of funding for the Select Board.
I move the following resolution be sent to the Plymouth County Commissioners. Whereas the Plymouth County Commissioners are administering the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for all municipalities in Plymouth County, and whereas the Plymouth County Commissioners are expecting to have unallocated American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for some municipalities in Plymouth County, and whereas the well-being of the residents and businesses in the town of Situate depend on reliable and resilient drinking water for infrastructure, and whereas the additional cost of the construction of the new water treatment plant exceeded the two thousand and twenty-two appropriation and is a financial burden to the town, residents of the town of Situate. The citizens of the town of Situate respectfully seek additional funding from the Plymouth County Commissioners of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to assist the nineteen-thousand residents of Situate in obtaining reliable and resilient drinking water infrastructure through the construction of a new water treatment plant.
We have a second. We have a second. We have a second.
Second? Second?
All right. We have a recommendation from advisory.
Oh.
Yeah, we're going to do the recommendations first.
The town of Situate sought funding from the Plymouth County Commissioners American Rescue Plan Act earlier this year and was allocated three-point-four million for the water treatment project. We know, as of a few months ago, that only forty-four percent of the hundred-and-one-million-dollar Plymouth County ARPA funds have been allocated to projects in the region. And by way of reference, every one million dollars in additional ARPA funds received decreases the estimated additional taxpayer expense by five dollars annually. The advisory committee recommends approval of this article with a unanimous vote, eight to zero in favor.
Thank you. Now, I think the Select Board has presented in spoiler motion.
Okay. As was mentioned, the Plymouth County Commissioners are charged with administering the total ARPA funding. The town of Situate received three million, four-hundred-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and seventy-three cents of ARPA funding from the Plymouth County Commissioners. We are thankful for the funding, and we allocated every penny of that three-point-four-million-funding to the water treatment plant. To date, some towns in Plymouth County have not spent, nor have they allocated roughly forty-two million of the hundred-and-one-million in ARPA funds. With this resolution, we are asking you to help send a message to your elected Plymouth County Commissioners. The message is that we are grateful for the funding we have received, and we hope that they will administer additional ARPA money for Situate for the critical purpose of obtaining reliable and clean drinking water infrastructure for the over nineteen-thousand people that call Situate home. The Select Board voted five to zero in support of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. It's a unanimous vote. Meeting is dissolved. Thank you for coming.